Paul. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem.
Here.
Melton.
Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Amy Melton?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're in the middle of the Christmas season right now, and so I think everybody's focusing on, you know, the Christmas presents that you need to buy. I know my kids, or at least the one that is left at home that still does the Santa list, I'm still getting things added to what I want for Christmas. But I would like everybody to maybe take a moment and try and do some service for somebody between now and Christmas, whether it become a mentor to a good organization, or go ring the bell for the Salvation Army, go serve food at one of the homeless shelters, Santa Francis, Open Door Mission, or if time doesn't allow, just think of one of the great organizations that we have here in Nebraska, or here in Omaha, Nebraska, because we're full of great organizations with great people that are willing to help. So even if you just give a little donation to somebody between now and Christmas, that would be great, so that everybody is kind of remembered. And I think that's the best Christmas present that you could give yourself. So, thank you.
Thank you.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for joining us today. And as a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Now, before we begin the major portion of our agenda today, we have a couple of proclamations and one announcement. And the one announcement that I have is I want all of you all, including my council members, to mark December 14th, which is this coming Friday, from 4:00 to 6:00, because I would like to see you all at the Bakers and Councilmember Chris Jerem's district on, from 4:00 to 6:00 this coming Friday, because I will be ringing the Salvation Army bell. And I would like for all of you to bring your dollars down with you. So, mark that on your calendars. I'll be looking for your faces. Yes?
I will be at the Hy-Vee at 132nd and Dodge on Saturday, the day after, from 4:00 to 6:00. So if anybody misses that one, they want to drive a little farther west, 132nd and Hy-Vee from 4:00 to 6:00. So come join us and drop some money in the kettlebell, or come to both.
Come to both.
Baker's and Hy-Vee.
Come to both. You have the, you have the money. Come on the boat. We have a couple of proclamations that we wanted to read today as well. One, Councilmember Melton is going to read, and the other I'm going to read. So I'll start, I'll give the floor to Councilmember Melton.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are here to do a proclamation for Big Brothers, Big Sisters. If I could have anybody from Big Brothers, Big Sisters come down. I know there's a number of you here. Stand right behind the podium, right there. And I'll read the proclamation, and then you can introduce yourselves. Whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Midlands was founded in 1959 with a mission of providing children facing adversity with strong and enduring relationships. And whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters, through the efforts of its employees and volunteers, achieves this mission by pairing these children with caring adult role models to form one-on-one mentoring friendships. And whereas the adult role models and the children they mentor form enduring relationships by spending time together engaged in mutually interesting activities. And whereas successful mentoring relationships help these children increase their likelihood to graduate from high school and college, build higher self-esteem, and develop a positive outlook on life. And whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters has served more than 1,000 children in our community each year since 2009. And whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters will celebrate its 60th anniversary in 2019, and will continue its service to our community by changing the lives of our children through its mentoring programs. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Omaha recognizes Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Midlands for their contributions to the Omaha area, offers its support during its 60th anniversary year in 2019, and declares December 11th, 2018, as Big Brothers, Big Sisters Day here in Omaha. In witness whereof, the Omaha City Council has caused the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this 11th day of December 2018. And I just want to say, it's very exciting for me to be able to actually give this to you today, because I worked with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I've seen the work that you have done over the last, I think, 10 years, is when I first became associated with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. You do a great job. You spend so much time and dedication and really try and match children. So here's yet another way this Christmas. You could become a mentor to Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So I'm sure that Nicole can tell everybody who to call. I'm going to hand this to you, and I'll have you guys introduce yourselves.
Okay. Thank you. I'm Nicole Turgeon. I'm the CEO of Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Midlands. I am joined by Elizabeth Hansen, our Chief Development Officer, and Brad Kirshenbaum, our Director of Marketing and Volunteer Recruitment. And Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Midlands is delighted to be spending our actual 59th anniversary of incorporation on December 11th with you all, with this Big Brothers, Big Sisters Day. So thank you, councilmen and councilwoman. With the support of the greater Omaha community, Big Brothers, Big Sisters has been igniting the potential of the incredible little brothers and little sisters in our program since 1959. At Big Brothers, Big Sisters, we create friendships that wouldn't naturally exist, and the power of these friendships is incredible. Youth in our program increase their academic performance, decrease their risky behaviors, and develop more positive relationships with their family and peers. And we hear from our volunteers that they sign up to give back, and they learn more from their littles than they could ever teach them. And this is all possible because these youth and their parents or guardians reach out to us and partner with our organization, and because incredible volunteers, supported by our professional staff, invest their time in these youth. And we're able to partner with these families and volunteers to clear the path to these youth's biggest possible future, thanks to the support, the financial support of individuals, corporations, and foundations in our community. So today is a day to celebrate all that so many in our community have done for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and our littles. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation I will read, and it's a proclamation to one of our superstar employees who is retiring. And we would like to see her stay forever, but fortunately for her, unfortunately for us, she can't. But I wanted to read this proclamation for Deb Sander. Deb would come to the, if Deb and her husband would come up to the podium, please. I'd like, or Deb, okay.
I only have to pay attention to her at work.
Oh, okay. Well, we're getting off to a good start here. Let me read this proclamation, and then I'll give you the copy that we have here, Deb. First of all, it reads, whereas Deb Sander was born in Omaha, attended St. Peter and Paul, graduated from Gross High School and Creighton University, and received her MBA from UNO. And whereas Deb married her husband Jeff in 1998, recently celebrating their 20th wedding anniversary. And whereas Deb and Jeff have a pet rabbit, Ringo, and over the past 20 years have rescued, fostered, parented 10 bunnies while pursuing her love of traveling, gardening, and exploring her natural surroundings. And whereas Deb has worked for many departments in a variety of capacities over 31 years with the City of Omaha, and has excelled in the interpretation and application of contract policy, attention to detail, and process improvement. And whereas Deb has demonstrated excellent leadership by always educating and encouraging her employees to strive for excellence. And whereas Deb was instrumental in the selection, implementation, maintenance, and administration of various financial, payroll, human resources, and benefits applications used by the City of Omaha. And whereas Deb served on the dot-com board of directors, was the chairperson of the dot-com oversight committee from 2012 to 2018, and has a conference room in the dot-com offices named in her honor. And whereas, as a champion of city, state, and federal rules and regulations, she has worked tirelessly to ensure the integrity and accuracy of all human resources, payroll, and information technology processes and information. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council, the City of Omaha recognizes Deb Sander for her exceptional service to the city, congratulates her on her retirement, and declares Friday, December 14th, 2018, as Deb Sander Day in Omaha. In witness whereof, we have set forth our hand and caused the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this 11th day of December 2018. Congratulations, Deb.
Thank you very much. I would just like to say, it has been my honor and my pleasure to serve the citizens of Omaha. It's been a fabulous job, and I have a fabulous staff. Thank you to Steve Curtis, my director, who's let me get away with probably more things than he should have. But we got it done. We are live on a brand-new payroll system, and hopefully nobody noticed. So we have the pensioners left to do in January, but other than that, it's all good. And you are in great hands. Veronica Banks, Kristin Cavell, Matt Dietrich, Amber Rich, Gabe McGrath, and Jeannie, who's come back, she's not here today, but you are in good hands. They will keep everything running, and I'm very confident in them. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Those of us who receive city paychecks really thank you. Madam Clerk.
Items 6 to 9 relate to the same project and can be considered together for the ridges. Replat 15, located south of Shadow Ridge Drive and east of 186th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 6, an ordinance to rezone this property from DR District to R4 District. Item 7, an ordinance to rezone this property from DR District to DR District. Item 8, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for the ridges replat 15. Item 9, a resolution to approve the final plat for the ridges replat 15.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 6 through 9 of today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road. Appearing now on behalf of the applicant. With me today is the applicant, Justin and Ellen Shanahan. We note the approvals that are on the agenda today, so we'll get right to, let me turn this on. The presentation, what this is, this is, or what they're looking to do is convert a portion, what did I guess? From up, do you have this one, from up and down? Yeah, there. This one's not very clear. There we go. Okay, it's clear for you guys. It's not clear on this monitor. Anyway, so what we're doing here is taking what is really excess or surplus property that is currently connected to the golf course, although it's not part of the golf course, it really is just excess land that is on the south side of Shadow Ridge Drive here in this location. This is hole number eight. As you can see, with the creation of this single-family residential lot and the rezoning of the same to build a residential structure at this location, no part of the golf course is being impacted by what is being proposed today. So hole number eight is a par-three hole. You've got the tee boxes, you've got the fairway, you've got the green, you've got the hazards, and you've got the out-of-bounces, and of course you have the hole in the pin. Not one part of the actual golf course itself or the hole is being impacted by this particular development. What you have here is, again, this monitor needs replaced. What you have here is showing the lot more closed or blown up as to its relationship to the adjacent house to the east, the one to the north, and the house to the west, as well as its relationship to the eighth green on the golf course. So again, no part of the golf course is being impacted by this proposed development. We have had some opposition on this particular replating and rezoning, primarily from the property owner to the west here. What I wanted to show and share with you is an exhibit that clearly shows their line of sight to the golf course. Their line of sight to the golf course is not impacted at all. Remember that the proposed single-family lot and residential dwelling will be constructed up here in this location. So neither house, east or west, will be impacted by this particular proposal. So you can see the view from the house to the east, facing the green, can still see the green, and the houses to the west can still see the eighth hole green. This is a view, and it's kind of interesting, because what the Shanahans did is they flew a drone about 55 feet in elevation, in height, from the kind of median grade of their proposed residential house. And this is their personal residence that they're looking at constructing here. So they flew the drone 55 feet up in the air, and that's higher than a two-story peak. A two-story house at its highest peak, this is a little bit higher than that at 55 feet. The house to the west is only visible right here, the roof line. You can see that. I just colored it in. But that's the only portion of that house that is visible at 55 feet in elevation. As far as another view, this is a view looking west to east. Again, the proposed lot and single-family residential house will be in this particular location. Again, a significant amount of landscaping that will remain on the golf course, as well as, I believe, in the Campbell's backyard. You'll probably hear from them this afternoon. What was asked of us also by the planning board at one point in time, and this started out in January, we laid it over in an attempt to work with the neighbors as to maybe satisfy or address some of their concerns, is we were asked, you know, how will this house lay out in this particular location? And so what we did, and what they wanted to make sure of is that there was not going to be any retaining walls, that you could essentially and effectively grade the property out from the back of the curb of Shadow Ridge Drive down to the south side of the lot. And here it shows, there's about a 21-foot grade differentiation between the back of curb of Shadow Ridge Drive and the south side of the lot. But that can easily be graded out based upon the size of the lot, so there are no retaining walls being used or needed in this location. Again, the other thing that Mr. Shanahan and his wife agreed to do is move the lot, or the house, 15 feet over and 15 feet to the north. So 15 feet to the east, 15 feet to the north, to get as much distance as they could away from the houses to the west. The other thing that came up, and this was really on the other case, I think Mr. Jerem brought this up about the covenants. I think the covenants were discussed on the Villas at one point. I do have another, this is another photograph. I actually took this photograph from the eighth green and the pin looking towards the Campbell's house. As you can see, there's a substantial amount of landscaping where their house isn't even visible from the flag and the pin of the eighth hole. But Mr. Jerem brought up in the Villa project, I think, because there was a question about the application of the covenants. And so I looked into that, and this is the actual language in the covenants. And I can make them part of the record as well. I think they might already be. But what essentially says is that Lot 268, 270, 271, 272 comprise the property that references the golf course or the Shadow Ridge Golf Course. And these lots, including the golf course, are included within and bound in all respects by the covenant set forth relative to the Design Review Board, inclusive of the requirement of the Design Review Board of all improvements structural and landscaping. It says, nonetheless, these lots are expressly exempted from all provisions relative to the Homeowners Association assessments, dues, financial obligations, membership, and voting entitlements. So what we did do, and I'll make this part of the record, is we took this proposal to the Design Review Board. There are six members on that board, five of which were present, one abstained, which is Mr. Shanahan. And they did, in fact, approve this proposal pursuant to the covenants. And so I'll make that part of the record. Mr. Shanahan is also agreed with respect to this particular lot to amend the covenants to bring that into the, what is Cherry Ridge, part of the subdivision of the ridges. There's, you know, the ridges is kind of comprised of a bunch of different subdivisions within the ridges that makes up the whole. He has agreed to pay assessments, obviously pick up voting rights as well with respect to this individual single-family lot, because this single-family lot located on Shadow Ridge Drive actually has benefited by a number of the improvements, the entryway features, the flowers, and landscaping that everyone shares in common with respect to the ridges. So I would just point out that this is a final plat, consistent with the preliminary plat. I know that preliminary plat's, you know, before you today as well. But it is consistent with the master plan and the future land use map is low-density residential housing. Again, Mr. Shanahan's met with the neighbors on numerous occasions, met with the association board. And again, what we, or what he was willing to do is provide additional landscaping, making sure that all the native grasses along the eighth hole were well manicured and maintained, and also, again, moved the lot 15 feet to the east and 15 feet to the west to minimize any impacts to the property owners to the west. This comes to you with a unanimous recommendation of approval by the planning board, as well as a recommendation of approval by the planning department. There was a 6 to 0 vote on the planning board. There was one abstention with that. I'm happy to answer any questions, and then, of course, respond to any opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Justin Shanahan, 19109 Marin de Circle. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Mr. Jovan, for eloquently stating the case. I know time is valuable, so I don't want to reiterate too much. But obviously, this is a very important project to us. My wife and I, this is going to be our next home. It's been our dream for a long time. We've known we're going to do this for years now. The time has finally come. It was last year, and we took the necessary steps to get it going. But this is not something new or unusual, both for this parcel of land or elsewhere in the ridges. There's been numerous occasions over the years, we have successfully converted unused land adjacent to the golf course and making it single-family residential lots. It's been beneficial in adding value to our community, reducing the scope of land maintenance that the golf course has to take care of because it's unused, so we don't have to mess with it. And it does provide our golf course and our company with needed resources to reinvest back in our property and in the golf course itself, which benefits all homeowners, members or not. One thing I think is really important to reiterate, and Larry touched on it, but a lot of the opposition is based around actively attempting to rezone parts of the Shadow Ridge Golf Course. And this is unequivocally false. This is not, by definition, part of the Shadow Ridge Golf Course. And I guess to back up, I'm the general manager of Shadow Ridge. I run our business. It's our family business. I've been in the golf business my whole life, so I'm well-versed in what a golf course is and is not. This parcel of property is just an unmaintained parcel of land, just like the other ones that we've, it has no bearing on the golf course. No part of the golf course has or will be rerouted, redesigned, or anything to accommodate a residential development of any kind. It just won't happen. Our first and utmost priority is our business, our golf course. And we would never do anything to jeopardize the quality or integrity of our golf course for the members and guests that play. It just wouldn't happen. This is actually going to be, for a lot of reasons, a benefit to the golf experience, to the golf course, and everybody involved. Larry touched on the Design Review Board. I am a member of that Design Review Board. I did abstain from voting for approval, but it was voted unanimously. We do, we're not even fully convinced that they apply to us these covenants as far as how they apply to the golf course. But in order to be good neighbors, we've tried every step in this process, because this is for our personal use, to be as amicable and neighborly as we could. And for the most part, it's, we've been very successful. If you look, the one neighbor that this property abuts is, she's tickled pink about it. She has written her letter of support. The neighbors to the north, the only folks that could say, hey, you know, we do have a view of the green from, now it's across the street, so it's, but the only ones that could say, they're in full support of this. The neighbors of the Campbell's, two homes down, full supportive. I, you know, it's, by and large, I think, there's a lot more folks that, for the most part, people, it doesn't really impact in one way or the other. But the people that are around there, the majority of them, have been nothing but supportive. You know, we've done everything we can do to accommodate the concerns of the Campbell's. We've offered to add landscaping at our own expense, give them a landscaping allowance for their own backyard, make changes to the property lines that Larry outlined. You know, everything that we could do, short of just scrapping the project, which we're not going to do, because at the end of the day, I think it's important for everybody to realize, and obviously, for the most part, I think people do that, this is, you know, our property, our family's property, and we're not looking to do something with it that's, you know, out of the norm of our neighborhood. The ridges is a residential community of 800 homes. There are homes everywhere, you know. This is adding to that. This, I guarantee you, this home will be done with the utmost quality and the style and feel of the rest of the neighborhood. We've agreed to pay all of the HOA dues, to be part of the Homeowners Association, to submit our final plans for the home. Again, back to the Design Review Board for approval. So this is going to fit right in. This is what should be there. It's going to be better for the neighborhood, better for the community, better for our golf course, better for anybody. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none of there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Bob Campbell, and I live at 1801 South 186th Street, Omaha, 68130. And we are here today because our family is directly and negatively affected by this rezoning proposal. And I'll submit a map here. This is just a general outlay of the planned subdivision that was planned 25 years ago. And just to mark where my wife and I live is right there. Okay. And we purchased our home on a golf course lot in the ridges community because our home abuts the golf course in a well-planned, mature, and complete community, a plan approved 25 years ago by the Omaha City Council. The ridges homeowners enjoy wide-open expanses of grass and trees because of the golf course developed in conjunction with the, and located within and throughout the ridges communication, community of homes. We chose this home because of the wide-open views and vistas we enjoy from our house and property, not because of something we could see. We currently have very limited view of a golf hole or a green or a fairway directly behind our house. We chose this house because of what was not located behind our house. We value the privacy and vistas of wide-open spaces with no house located behind our property. We bought here because of the views and vistas of the golf course, particularly from our own property, but also because of the views of the course throughout the neighborhood. And to give you some perspective, here's a picture of view from one of our windows in the, in our home. And here's a view of another window from our home. And here's another view. As you can see, the nice vistas. Okay. Here's another view. Again, wide-open space vistas. Another one a little bit closer to our fence line. Okay. And this one is also shows the vistas, but this is from a public sidewalk. Okay? That everyone enjoys, that walks, runs, walks their dog, and can enjoy the view of the, of the golf course. of the golf course. So we have come here today to express our extreme opposition to the rezoning of Shadow Ridge Golf Course to accommodate a residential lot behind our property, or rezoning any golf course land in any area of the ridges. However, we will be limiting our brief presentation to you to the ways this rezoning proposal, ridges replat 15, has significantly and negatively affected our family. On the advice of our attorney from Kootok Rock, we will provide to you significant information that you may not already know, and you may be very interested in learning. But before we give you the new and pertinent information, we'd like to point, make a point about whether or not people really care about this proposal. So we submit for the public record, and you might already have this, a list of over 140 ridges residents who came to our house to sign a petition opposing the proposal. We did not go door-to-door seeking those signatures. Residents of the ridges made the effort to come to our home on a cold weekend in late February of this year. Previously, the applicant's representative told the planning board that the petition should be discounted because residents were scared into signing it. It was insinuated that the, that the lack of their presence at these public meetings indicated they didn't care or really care about this issue. We argue that there may be good reasons that people are not present at these city meetings held in the middle of the workday, but we disagree that residents of the ridges are not intelligent enough to see an issue for what it is and form an opinion on that matter. Those signatures represent opposition. In addition, letters and emails were written in opposition of this proposal, as well as another rezoning proposal, and submitting that into the records. So you have, and again, you might not already have this. It was sent to the zoning board, but we are not certain if you have it in your case file. I have five points to make to you today. First of all, I believe that city council has been misled. You were led to believe that rezoning Shadow Ridge Golf Course land was part of a master plan that had been in the minds of the golf course owners for a long time, and they would never do anything detrimental to the course. And we believe this current proposal today, ridges replat 15, is part of a Plan B for the applicant and the golf course. Plan A included a development plan designed to be entirely funded by a $20 million pledge. The monies to fund the development did not materialize, and the golf course filed a lawsuit. The documents presented as part of the lawsuit describe a far different plan than the one that they had submitted to you and voiced as being part of their master plan for the betterment of the golf course. And we will submit those public documents here for the, for the records as well. We believe it shows that this rezoning and any residential development on the golf course is a Plan B for the applicant and the golf course, and would in no way be beneficial to our ridges, our ridges community. Now, Plan B is in place to begin chiseling away at the golf course. In the proposal today that directly and negatively impacts our family, the applicant is attempting to get areas of the golf course rezoned for his private use. We don't see how reducing the size of a beautiful open space on the golf course enhances the golf course or enhances a golfer's playing experience. It may not be every day that homeowners are opposed to additional expensive homes being built in their neighborhood, but this is a unique neighborhood. There are plenty of expensive homes to maintain property values. Homeowners who have purchased homes on a premium, for a premium, on lots with wonderful views of wide-open spaces and lush trees and grasses, don't want to have additional homes built in their sightlines, no matter how expensive the home is. In addition to being misled by a master plan for the betterment of the golf course, the city council was given misleading information regarding ridges covenants. The applicant first said that the Shadow Ridge Golf Course was in no way subject to the ridges covenants. Then, when faced with the fact that one of the city council members indicated that he would have reason to deny proposals if covenants are violated, the applicant submitted to the city what we consider to be really a bogus design review board approval. And I'll explain what I mean by bogus a little later. Point number two, our community has been misled. I'm submitting into public record a letter from the homeowners' association, sent to all ridges residents. This letter was sent to all ridges homeowners about rezoning in the ridges. It has significant misinformation in it that could lead residents to erroneous conclusions about the rezoning of the golf course land within our community. Besides this one letter, there has been no further information given to all ridges residents. This failure to provide information is a significant issue in our neighborhood and a breach of confidence. All residents deserve to understand the issue in its entirety, understand how it affects them, understand the ramifications of this, this decision, and the precedent it sets in our neighborhood. Point number three, there are more opponents to this issue than you may think because there is a fear of reprisal for openly opposing the applicant. Residents fear that their club membership will be revoked. They fear the DRB reprisals for openly opposing any of the rezoning plans for the golf course. They fear the design review board reprisal involves a homeowner's requirement application to the DRB for home improvements. They fear the applications will be ignored, delayed, or refused. We have excerpts of emails and, and information that's been sent to us. I'll read this one. Neither of us will comment publicly on Nextdoor as we have a project we need DRB approval for, and we are concerned that we may receive an unfavorable response from, if we do voice an opinion that is in odds with Shadow Ridge Country Club. Another one here. And I heard from a member that they have told them that if they sign the petition, they're going to be kicked out of the club. Another fear of DRB reprisal involves covenant violations. We have experienced inappropriate use of covenant violations as a form of reprisal. One notice of covenant violation came shortly after we passed out a flyer to all the ridges homeowners that had information about the rezoning proposals, and we put a sign in our yard to allow residents to sign a petition over one weekend. To us, this notice was sent in March regarding landscaping that we did in the fall of the previous year, and this type of reprisal for our efforts for opposing the rezoning. There it is there, for the records. Another notice came a few days after the applicant and the golf course owner came to our back fence and accosted me personally. Point number four, our family has been neglected and mistreated by our homeowners' association and the DRB. As soon as we learned about this proposed replat, we contacted the president and secretary of the homeowners' association and asked them to step in and help us. The president said to us that the homeowners' association does not have a dog in this fight, and we were shocked. Why have an HOA at all if it refuses to oppose a land developer that puts the homeowner's properties' interests at risk? Isn't that their primary job? As soon as possible, arrangements were made to speak to the homeowners' association at a, at a board meeting. In attendance with me was my wife, along with a neighbor who's an attorney, and finally a resident of the ridges, who had lived there since it was first developed 25 years ago. Our message was to, was to them was that the ridges HOA was more powerful, had more, sorry, had more power and responsibility to oppose this than perhaps they realized. We were disappointed that little is recorded in the minutes, but we will submit that as well as evidence. The HOA president told us that the board's attorney had advised the HOA that the HOA can get involved in this matter, but the HOA doesn't have to get involved in this matter. So, the president told us that the HOA had chosen not to get involved. We asked for a legal opinion on this matter. We were never given one. Our family has been betrayed in the worst sense by the ridges homeowners' association and DRB. We have received an approval, you have received an approval for this proposal for the ridges, from the ridges DRB. We are asking you to dismiss that approval for good reasons. First of all, that kind of DRB approval was meant to be obtained for any structures built by the golf course for the purposes of golfing facilities or country club facilities. It's not meant to be a way to rezon and develop any part of the golf course. The applicant and/or the DRB has twisted the purpose of the required DRB approval to suit their purposes. Secondly, we believe that the DRB should have actually made efforts to oppose the rezoning of the golf course property instead of approving it because it violates express and implied restrictive covenants. Our attorney makes this clear in a letter to the applicant, and this document is there for your records as well. Thirdly, the HOA failed to ensure the DRB was carrying out its mandate to act in the best interest of the ridges homeowners. The HOA has the power and responsibility to select all the members of the DRB, dismiss them from the board at any time, and monitor the decisions they make. The HOA failed us in their duty to ensure that the DRB was doing its job. Most importantly, we believe that the zoning board and city council should look with open eyes at this obvious conflict of interest that has resulted in a false and inappropriate DRB approval of the residential development on the golf course land. The applicant, as you mentioned, is a member of the DRB. The other DRB members' identities are concealed from ridges residents. This is highly suspect. There is nothing in the ridges covenants that say those identities can be concealed. The HOA should not be hiding the identities of individuals that have such power in the ridges. Not only has our family been neglected and mistreated by the HOA, we believe the HOA has misled ridges residents into thinking that the covenants stipulate a DRB position must be reserved for the owner of the golf course or someone of its choosing. However, there is no stipulation in the ridges covenants that require the ridges HOA to give the golf course owner that privilege at this time. Most importantly, the HOA must ensure beyond a shadow of a doubt that the DRB members have no conflict of interests or alliances with the golf course or the applicant that would cause them to make inappropriate decisions. According to the covenants, the DRB is chosen by the HOA, and they can be removed by the HOA at any time for any reason. Additionally, there are requirements for the type of expertise the DRB members must Last point, point number five, our family has been mistreated and, and threatened by the applicant of the golf course. We have been threatened with legal action against us. The applicant came to our property and personally accosted me, and among a rant of insults made by the applicant and his father, the applicant threatened to make life difficult for us. He said he knew who my employer was and knew the former CEO personally, and what would my employer think of me challenging the proposed rezoning? These kinds of behaviors are a direct result of us speaking out in opposition to this proposal. In conclusion, if you choose to deny this proposal, we will have renewed faith in the system and process in the Omaha City Council. However, if you pass this proposal, we will, we will choose to be grateful for an excellent attorney and the precedent set by the Nebraska Supreme Court decision regarding the Skyline Homeowners Association, who fought against a bait-and-switch kind of development in Omaha and won their case. We hope the facts that we've shared with you today will create a new sense of responsibility in our HOA to fulfill their responsibilities and to use to us and other ridges homeowners differently from now on. Finally, thanks for your time. I will answer any questions you have now, and I will address anything the applicant or his representatives may say today that we consider misleading. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, do the proponents wish any rebuttal time? Oh, could you get all the stuff that you were going to give to the clerk? Could you make sure that gets to the clerk, please?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Larry Jovan, 11440 West End Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I just want to point out a few things. I know that Mr. Shanahan has a few comments he would like to make, as well as some of the allegations that were made, I think, were interesting, but...
Keep it down to about, let's do about two or three minutes.
Yeah, I'll try to be very brief, but, so, here's the entire neighborhood. You've got Civic Street on the north, you've got 180th on the east, you've got Weston Road on the south, and you've got 192nd Street on the west. The, interestingly, as you saw the Villa, a case that came before you on the preliminary plat some time ago, you remember, this was the, I don't know if that's coming out very clear, but this was the notice of urgent legal situation in the ridges that was pasted on everyone's door, including my own, that said that based upon this Villa project that the Shadow Ridge Country Club was chopping up the golf course, and by chopping up the golf course, if you recall, it was going to decrease property values, it was going to reduce visibility to the golf course, which wasn't true. We went through that whole thing before. It was going to increase traffic flows, it was going to do all these things. Well, based upon this notice, if I can make part of the record, that's why the petition was signed by the various people. Why? Because they, they thought the sky was falling based upon this letter that was posted on everyone's door, including myself, that the sky wasn't falling and didn't fall and will not fall. So, that petition that was signed was primarily based upon that set of false information that was given to all the residents within this entire development. And if you look at the petition, if you analyzed it, most of the signatures are duplicate for each household. So, there, there are some signatures that come from a household where there's two signatures, a husband and wife's sign, so if you really pare that down, there's only about 80 houses within a subdivision of 800 homes that actually signed that petition. As far as the master plan and the covenants, you know, the problem is, is this association, this HOA, acted within its bounds, within its power and authority. They, they met, they've determined that they were not getting involved. The design review board met and approved the proposed replating, rezoning. They'll eventually have to review the plans that Mr. Shanahan submits as far as how he wants to build his residence. The fact of the matter is, the Campbells can't accept what this HOA has legitimately done and, and what they decided to do in their discretion, based upon their power and authority under the covenants and under the law. I don't think anyone did anything wrong. They may have a different opinion than the Campbells do about how this impacts the neighborhood. I think you find that what they're going to construct is absolutely within the integrity, the character, and the value of this entire neighborhood, and I don't certainly, being a resident of the neighborhood myself, do not see this as a negative impact to the neighborhood. I think they've pushed the, the lot and the house far enough away. You can see, there's still lots of landscaping here, there's lots of views, there's lots of houses within this development that look at each other. There happen to be very nice homes to look at. So, you know, the, the problem is, is the Campbells, with all due respect, I, I understand their feelings, but the HOA board has a duty, and they have the power, they have the authority to act in accordance with their bylaws, their articles, and the covenants. They've done that. The design review board has the same power and authority. They've done that. The problem is, is they can't accept that, and, and that's where we are, but the city, as you know, has never got into the private covenants anyway. You look at this strictly really from a zoning and subdivision matter, and if you look at that, the zoning and subdivision are consistent with the master plan, consistent with all of our zoning and subdivision regulations. That's why you have a favorable recommendation from the planning department. That's why we had a favorable recommendation from the planning board. This actually is the first time this city council's seen this particular development because it's a preliminary plat, final plat rezoning, right? The minor amendment to the special use permit to allow outdoor recreation was actually approved by the planning department as well, probably 30 days ago. So, everything has fallen in line to let the Shanahans build the house that they want to build in this particular location. It's been approved by all the necessary parties within the neighborhood. I don't want to take any more time because I know Justin wants to address some of the allegations that were made by Mr. Campbell. allegations that were made by Mr. Campbell towards them. And as far as threatening litigation, I think Mr. Campbell has done that to the Shanahans as far as seeking an injunction or whatever to stop them from building their house. So, anyway, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Shanahan. And thank you for your time.
Mr. Shanahan, let me give you about a minute or two, okay? Thank you.
Justin Shanahan, 19109, Miranda Circle, and I'll make it brief. I know you guys have a long afternoon ahead of you. First and foremost, there is no Plan B. This will always, this is our family's business, it will always remain a golf course. If I ever come down here with a Plan B, you guys can kick me right out because that's never going to happen. I don't know what they're referring to. This is our life's work. It will always be a golf course. With regard to the original plan that Mr. Campbell referred to as a master plan, that is not. What that was, was a marketing piece from the early 90s when they started to develop the golf course. If you look at it, it doesn't even have our swimming pool, our fitness center. A lot of the lots are not what they are today. It's simply an outdated marketing piece. It's not a guaranteed master plan of anything. Finally, Steve, my dad, is not here to defend himself. We came down to where this lot is, Mr. Campbell was there, there, you know, this has been a tough process for us. My wife and I have been called out online, we've had horrible things said about us and our business, and I'll be the first to admit my temper might have flared up a little bit, and I do apologize for that. That's, it's unacceptable no matter what. It doesn't come, that's not normally the way I operate, and I, it's unacceptable, and I know Steve would say the same thing. But I can tell you that if anybody's gone through hell and back for this process, both online, publicly, it's been my wife and I, the stuff they said about us personally, about the, we would never threaten anybody to kick them out of the club because they, that's insane. Like, that's just, that's not who we are. And so, those type of things, they hurt, and they start to build up in you a little bit, and maybe we did in a confrontation act inappropriately, and for that, I apologize. So...
Thank you. And with that, the public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had that because I wanted to get the documents. I apologize, I just didn't turn it back off.
Okay. Public hearing is closed. Counsel, it's a pleasure. Mr. Hardy?
I'm looking at one of the documents that was put up, and I'm trying to find the relevance of it that Mr. Campbell put up. It was a copy of, from the court case, the matter of the estate of Wayne Ryan, deceased. Could you please come to the podium and explain what the relevance of this document is?
The relevance of the document is that there was a plan to, that was submitted, no, sorry, a proposal that was submitted, and there was going to be a massive reconstruction of several things related to the golf course, and that fell through. They didn't get the money. They went ahead with some of the renovations, and I think they've quoted $5 million before. So, now, Plan B, as I mentioned, is they need to pay for it, and so, one of the opportunities to pay for it is to carve up land that's considered golf course land.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jovan, did, I'm not sure that you've seen this document that was just submitted, but I don't know if you can comment on it, or if Justin could?
I'll let Mr. Shanahan answer that.
Justin Shanahan, 19109, Miranda Circle. It's completely unrelated to any of this. It's a separate matter, dealing with our business and a pledge that was made to our business, but it has no bearing. We've done extensive golf course renovations. I mean, that's the other thing about this that is kind of difficult sometimes because we've invested a lot into our golf course to make it better for our members. We've invested a lot into the club, all these things. We've done that, and they are not predicated on any, this particular, I, my dad is kind enough to give us this lot. There's no revenue being generated by this as far as the other development we're doing. Those are separate issues, but none of the improvements that we've made to the golf course are contingent upon that or a project that we are doing for development purposes. We've already paid for all the improvements to the course, the clubhouse, all those things, and we'll continue to do that.
So, bottom line, this is a separate deal, then?
This is a totally separate deal that's completely unrelated to this matter.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, pleasure.
Make a motion to approve items 6 through 9.
Second, roll call. I'm sorry, Mr. Hardy, Mr. Jarrett.
I, this is obviously an issue that I don't know in my district that we have with the density of the housing. We would hear these arguments. I think there's something to be said about living close to your neighbors. You know, neighbors take care of neighbors, they welcome new neighbors, at least the way I think it is, and for the most part, in midtown and downtown. And there's something to be said about being there for the other person. And I, it just, as I listen to this case, I was somewhat struck by what I would call very first-world problems, and that because of your success in life, you're blessed to have these headaches, but there's a lot of people in other parts of the city that don't. But that doesn't mean that you're any worse off because of the proximity to your neighbor. I mean, it's not a bad thing. And, I mean, I don't know of you in any direction from my house where I don't have just a few feet to the next-door neighbors. But you know what? I kind of like the little kids in the backyard that play on their swing set, even though they're right there. My neighbor who goes to work out all the time makes me feel guilty about not working out so much myself. We shovel each other's and snowblow each other's walks, and I have a sense, although I don't know for sure because I haven't asked anyone how, I have a sense that this is going to pass today, and I hope that you keep in mind that having neighbors can be a good thing, even though you've had this pristine view in many respects of the backyard. I look at this as a, as a good project, it'll be a wonderful home, and an opportunity to put this behind you. But it was kind of odd, for me anyway, for where I live in my part of the city, to hear having a house next door is a bad thing, or in the backyard.
Oh, try to live in where I live. Did you have your light on, Mr. Hardy? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, there are no more lights, it's been moved and seconded to approve items 6 through 9, roll call.
Halls.
Yes.
Poleramo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarrett.
Yes.
Melton.
Pass.
Melton. Sorry, Mr. President.
Yes.
Melton.
Pass.
Councilmember Melton passes twice due to potential conflict of interest. Items 6 through 9 are approved, 6 to 0. Items 10 to 13 relate to the same project and can be considered together for West Center Village located southeast of 204th Street and West Center Road. Planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item 10, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to MU District. Item 11, a resolution to approve the final plat for West Center Village. Item 12, a resolution to approve the West Center Village subdivision agreement. Item 13, an ordinance to approve the West Center Village mixed-use district development agreement.
Public hearing on the agenda items, numbers 10 through 13 of today, proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440, West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. In this particular case, it's 204th and Center LLC, which is a Woodsonia company. With me today from Woodsonia is Jeff Elliott and Drew Schneider, as well as Kirsten Stratman. This property is located, put this up here. It's located at the southeast corner of what I call Highway and Highway, essentially Highway 92, which is West Center Road, and Highway 31, which is 204th Street. This is the southeast corner again, and you notice the ramps and such that serve West Center Road and also Highway 31. The total acres of the proposed development, which is outlined in green here, is 36.51 acres. What is being proposed here is to subdivide the property into eight buildable lots, two outlots. The outlots are primarily for drainage and then access to the permanent detention pond and the creek that runs through the north side of the property. The rezoning that's being sought today, of course, is from ag to mixed-use, and it's important to note that the intersection of West Center Road and 204th Street is 165-acre mixed-use triangle. And what that means is that that's the second-largest mixed-use area, as you know, that we have in the city of Omaha. The first is the metro credit, the metro community mixed-use center, which is the West Roads area around Regency and such. So, what the 165-acre mixed-use area provides for and allows is the property extending a half-mile south of the intersection, a half-mile west of the intersection, a half-mile north of the intersection, and a half-mile east of the intersection can be used for mixed-use purposes. And so, we fall within that particular triangle. It's really a pretty standard mixed-use development. You've got your typical mix of uses. There's a C-store, and there's some retail bays, and there's an office building, and there's a dance studio, and so, all of those things are pretty customary. There's a multifamily component as well on this side of the development. It's bound by Vinton Street to be extended in the, from 204th to the eastern boundary of the property, 203rd that wraps up around, and then it turns into Oak Street that makes a connection to the undeveloped property to the east. The one use that I did want to talk about because it is unique to the city of Omaha, and we have one issue that we have to discuss, and hopefully, this council will approve this part of it, but it is, it relates to this area right here, which is Lot 7, and it is a 72-unit car condominium complex, and this is first of its kind in Omaha. They're high-end man caves, if you will. The vanilla shell itself, this is without any improvements to it, is about $150,000 to $180,000, and it's for people to put their hydraulic ramps and store their cars. They have heated floors and restrooms, and so, they're very, very high-end. This is what, this is sort of just conceptual elevation in the front, and I'll get into this a little bit later, but you notice, and I'll get back to the issue we need to talk about. But this shows the front off of Oak Street would be on the north side of this property. You notice the gates here, because we'll get into that here in a minute. And then, here is kind of the front elevation looking north to south off of Oak Street. And you notice in the middle, the various, I don't know if you can zoom in on that, it looks a little dark, doesn't it? But what it shows essentially is people, cars parked in the middle of the car condominium complex. It's primarily for car shows on the weekends, it's also for charity events, that kind of thing. And so, what, one of the issues we had is with Public Works. Public Works has driveway regulations, and their driveway regulations essentially say that in a mixed-use area, and really in any area actually, that there, you should have a shared driveway, which we have here in this location. Again, this is Vinton on the south, 203rd, and then, of course, Oak Street that makes the connection to the east. And what the driveway regulations say is, you should have a shared driveway, and then you can have one exclusive driveway. And typically, you would go to the Administrative Board of Appeals to get a waiver of a third access point, but because this is a mixed-use development, we were asked to come here to seek your approval, which would be an amendment to the mixed-use development agreement, in particular Exhibit B, which is a development plan, to ask for the three driveway locations, the shared, the middle, and then, of course, this new one over here at this location. Now, remember, this is going to be gated here. OPBD has 100-foot easement here, and this third access, because of the gate, will actually allow OPBD to directly access their easement area so they can maintain their utilities. But more importantly, it will provide access on the weekends and during charity events when really this middle access point will be closed. And why will it be closed? It will be closed because the middle area will be blocked with cars and people and the event itself. So, what we're asking, and like I said, this is a little unique, is we're asking for essentially a waiver of the driveway regulations with respect to this one use that would allow for shared access and two dedicated access points off of Oak Street. That's something we have to address as we go down the road here and seek our approvals. Which gets us to kind of the next point, which relates to access, and I'll bring this exhibit back up. Again, being 165-acre mixed-use center, typically, you would have your full movement intersection at the quarter mile, but because this is a state highway, it's the intersection of Highway and Highway, and you've got the ramps serving both 204th Street, serving West Center Road, you couldn't have the quarter mile be the full movement intersection. So, what had to happen, and this was set by the Nebraska Department of Transportation in concert with the Public Works Department as well, we've been meeting with them quite a bit on this particular project. So, this is all controlled access by the State Department of Road. So, you cannot access, the first point you can access 204th Street is at the third mile. And so, this third mile access will not only serve this development, but it will also serve the 200 acres that are east of this development that are owned by the land that is currently undeveloped. It probably will be some kind of residential development down the road. They will be able to access, and that's this property shown here, they'll be able to access it off of Vinton and off of Oak Street as well. But you'll notice, and this project is not before you quite yet, but I think it's supposed to be going to the planning department at some point, if I can find the exhibit. It's a project immediately west of this project on 204th Street. So, this is our proposed development that's before you today. This is Vinton Street, and this is a subdivision called Privata. You'll notice that the intersection meets up with Vinton Street here. Why does it meet up with Vinton Street there? Because that's what the Department of Transportation said where it had to be located. And so, there's really not a lot of leeway as far as its location. I think the interesting point at this juncture is the fact that 204th Street today has about 28,000 cars that go up and down 204th Street. In 2040, the year 2040, it's expected to have about 40,000 vehicles per day on 204th Street. Currently, it's really a very dangerous intersection. You'll note that there is a company that is currently immediately to the south of this proposed development called The Rock Place. It was, it was put in use many, many years before the city of Omaha extended its ETJ or its extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction out to this location. So, what you have now is really kind of an industrial use in ag, which would be a legal non-conforming use, meaning that he can't, under the city's zoning jurisdiction, increase the level of nonconformity, or he can't really change what he has there or increase what the use that he has there because it is not properly zoned. Why isn't it properly zoned? Because the master plan calls for it to be mixed-use all the way to the half-mile, and the highest and best use obviously is probably some other mixed-use, commercial mixed-use development down the road, which he will enjoy the value of that based upon the master plan, right? So, this, I have some photographs. These were taken from a drone, and this will be important to kind of go back and forth between what currently exists today and what's being proposed with this particular development and the improvements on Vinton Street that will serve not only this property, but The Rock Place property to the south, as well as the property 200 acres to the east. So, this is a, The Rock Place would be in this location here. This is their current access that they have. Obviously, it ends right here, and it comes in off of 200... Obviously, it ends right here, and it comes in off of Two Hundred Fourth Street. It makes an entrance in into his customers' area. This is showing, or, or looking east to west, so Two Hundred Fourth Street, and that property I showed you, it would be developed down the road called Privata. That's shown to the west. This is kind of another good location showing the configuration of the current access. Again, it just comes in and goes immediately to the south to serve this particular use, The Rock Place. So, that's looking sort of northeast, or, I'm sorry, looking southeast. This is the last kind of photograph, but we can kind of flip back and forth between them. This is looking west-east. You notice, here's the proposed development, here's The Rock Place, here's the configuration of the street, and then back there is all the undeveloped property that we talked about, the two hundred acres that will be served by Vinton Street and Oak Street and Two Hundred Third Street. And it will be the only connection that they're able to have. And, and part of that reason is because there is a single-family subdivision that currently is situated south of The Rock Place, and there's a pretty significant grade change here. So, this is a neighborhood, there's, there's really no connection that would be able to be made to Two Hundred Fourth Street. So, this Vinton Street access is extremely important to the viability of not only the west, this development and The Rock Place south, but also to the east of this particular development. So, we had met with The Rock Place and, and as you, a number of times with the Nebraska Department of Transportation, as well as the Public Works Department, and we were trying to come up with solutions. I think we came up with some really good solutions that will help everybody out here. And what, what this project is doing is it's providing for certain improvements to Vinton Street, and hopefully, you can see this clear enough, but, but what it is, what's being provided here, and, and this was all in accommodation originally when we went to the, thank you. Originally, we went to the Planning Board, we laid it over, because what we were showing is Vinton Street being aligned, one half on The Rock Place property, one half on the, the West Center Village property, so the, the proposed development. So, the gentleman, Mr. Hafke, did not want the right-of-way to be half on his, half on ours, even though it would serve both properties. But, and as a compromise, we agreed after the required intersection connection to pull a hundred percent of the right-of-way of Vinton Street back on the proposed development. So, you'll notice, once it crosses back at this line, a hundred percent of Vinton Street right-of-way is on our property, not on The Rock Place's property. What has to happen in order to make this development work and Vinton Street work, and this would be true whether it be the city of Omaha or our sanitary improvement district, which is a political subdivision of the state of Nebraska, has power of eminent domain just like the city of Omaha. All the same rules apply when you acquire property, and sometimes you need to use power of eminent domain to make sure that you have safe roadway improvements that serve the public generally, which this will in fact do based upon development to the west, this development, The Rock Place, and of course, the two hundred acres to the east. So, I'll get to the improvements that were worked out with the Nebraska Department of Transportation, as well as the Public Works Department. What we're showing here is essentially six lanes of traffic, or six lanes of pavement that will be installed at, at Two Hundred Fourth and Vinton. You're going to have one dedicated out, one dedicated through street. You'll notice the chevrons, that's a dead lane, because the, on the other side, they have enough traffic to have dual lefts. We, we won't have, they won't be, they won't conflict. So, there's a dead lane here shown by the chevrons, and then there's a dedicated left-turn movement onto Two Hundred Fourth Street. In addition, there is a dedicated or an exclusive right-turn lane that also will be constructed along Two Hundred Fourth Street into Vinton Street to make for a much safer situation because you pull traffic, obviously, off the highway, so they can make a safe turn into all the developments that are served by Vinton Street. Then, on the way in, you have two inbound lanes coming in, one that will serve The Rock Place entirely. I mean, you can use both lanes to move on east, but one will be a direct turn. And what's interesting about this, if you note, we were very careful trying not to adjust the configuration of Mr. Hafke's access into his area. And so, that configuration that exists today, oops, yeah, right there, I'm sorry, exists tomorrow. And we worked with the Department of Transportation and Public Works, and, and I, quite frankly, I was a little surprised. I was happy for Mr. Hafke, because the Department of Transportation said, yes, you know what? We're going to allow you to continue to have your current access the way it currently exists, okay? The difference, of course, is that there is a median that has to be constructed that will not allow people to come out and make a left turn here, but people can, passenger vehicles can make a permissible U-turn. We talked about that as far as coming out and making a permissible U-turn at Two Hundred Third Street. But also, what Public Works said, and we were happy to hear this as well, is that Public Works said that they would grant access to The Rock Place and Mr. Hafke anywhere he wants, east of Two Hundred Third Street, along Vinton Street. So, he can access this, and he has, has got lots of opportunities. The grade is essentially at grade from about this location all the way to the east side of the property, that he can access this, his truck movements, movements can make a safe, much safer turn. What we've also done, you'll note, is that it's going to be signalized immediately. So, all the truck traffic, passenger traffic, instead of making these southbound left turns with no signal with twenty-eight thousand cars coming, will now have a traffic signal. We also have a dedicated left-turn lane that will actually come in as well. Everything being signalized, it provides for a much safer situation, and, and again, serves the property of the south, serves the proposed development, and the property of the east, and the property to the west. So, we, we've been working with Mr. Hafke, and Public Works was at these meetings, I think we had three or four of them, with the Department of Transportation, as well as the Public Works Department. Because of the location that's locked in by the NDOT, we're required to acquire point three-six acres of right-of-way that's shown here in yellow to put in those six lanes of traffic. That's, that, that will exist today, that'll exist, exist down the road. Whoever develops any of this property, that's the location because of the controlled access to the state highway system. What, in order to make those improvements as well, we need about a one-point-five-one acre temporary construction easement. These temporary construction easements go away in a year. Once construction is done, the improvements are in, they vaporize and, and no longer encumber the property. And, and it's to also serve The Rock Place as well in making and accommodating Vinton Street and these improvements to them. Again, this is a, going to be developed through the use of a sanitary improvement district. It's a political subdivision of the state of Nebraska. It has a statute story and constitutional right to acquire property by eminent domain. That doesn't mean take it. That means pay fair compensation for that. What the law also requires is that we negotiate in good faith. We will continue to do that with Mr. Hafke. We want to be good neighbors, and we think we've tried to be good neighbors all along in trying to come up with solutions to provide him access. But the bottom line is, he will have access, he will have good access. He'll have better access with this development than he currently does because you have a traffic signal, a dedicated right, a dedicated left. You've got four lanes on outbound and two lanes inbound. I mean, obviously, four, one's a dead lane, but, but you have that ability down the road if there was ever a dual lefts. So, this all, of course, is at no cost to the city, no cost to the Nebraska Department of Transportation, and no cost to the county. This SAD has the capacity. We've dealt with our municipal advisors, and they have found that we have the capacity to, to pay for essentially what it takes to acquire the right-of-way, acquire the temporary construction easement, and install these public improvements. The total valuation of this particular project upon full build-out, and I'm talking about the, the proposed development, is about forty-eight million dollars, and that's what, of course, is used to help defray, publicly defray the costs of, of this infrastructure. The total public improvement costs that we're looking at, that's Vinton Street, Two Hundred Third Street, and Oak Street, is about four-point-six million, of which, of which a million of it is attributable to the signal, the dedicated left, the dedicated right, and all the improvements on Vinton Street. And that includes all the way along The Rock Place's frontage. I mean, so those public improvements are being constructed from Two Hundred Fourth all the way along The Rock Place's frontage that they can use at any particular location. And I, I would point out that, that this did receive favorable recommendations from the Planning Department, had a unanimous recommendation of approval from the Planning Board. It was a six oh vote with one abstention, and the final plat was approved by, I'm sorry, the preliminary plat was approved by this council on April fourth of this year, I'm sorry, May eighth of this year. And the final plat that is before you today is in conformance with the preliminary plat that was approved by the council. We have a, a lot of people, including the car condominium project, that need to move forward to meet their timeframes and their obligations. So, it's important that we move this project forward today, understanding that we are required as a matter of law to continue to negotiate in good faith with Mr. Hafke if we do have to exercise the power of eminent domain, and we're, we're willing to work with him. And, and that's pretty much all I have. Obviously, we'd like to be available for questions and respond to any opposition that you might hear today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Sure.
Mr. President, members of the city council, my name is Tom Monahan, fourteen oh three Farnham Street. I represent The Rock Place, Mr. Michael Hafke, who will speak to you in a few minutes. You got half of the story so far, and the half the story isn't too bad, but the problem is Vinton Street and the access to The Rock Place. There are significant grade problems. What will really happen is that, if you notice the green spot and this curve here, that will make this curve and this building useless, because in order to get back on, we'd have to move rock bins and a great deal of property in order to make it work, because we can't get the trucks in anymore through that entrance, and we can't get them out. The grades are much different. What I've suggested, I sent all of you a, a letter yesterday. I did make one mistake in it, I apologize. It's not a US highway, it's a state highway. I probably made other mistakes, but that's the only one I've caught. And what we're saying is that we need some time, because we haven't had conversations with the proponents. So, we had the last one in August and nothing more. We have now picked a, an engineer to help us figure some of this out. We're doing a survey now, it won't be done for a while. We're suggesting that you get laid over until the first of the year. We're not anxious to put this off forever, we're anxious to be able to continue Mr. Hafke's business, which is a very successful business of selling rocks out there, but it does take access both to the customers, but more importantly, getting the trucks in. And the grade will be significantly changed, and I can't tell you how much, one, because I'm just a lawyer, not an engineer, but the engineer and the surveyors are going to be able to bring that back to you if, if we can and show you the differences. We think this is a project that can work without a huge amount of, of fighting, but it doesn't work now. It's going to put Mr. Hafke into a significant bind. One of the discussions, as I set forth in the letter, is that they talked about moving the bins and, and doing the underlayment for the bins. What I've received just recently are estimates of what that will cost. I'd like to leave that to the record. And then, I would give Mr. Hafke an opportunity to talk about the turn-in and the problems that would cost, cause his business.
Thank you. Any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Michael Hafke. I own The Rock Place at thirty-four oh five, South Two Hundred Fourth Street. When Larry was talking about the access, and he showed you the one road, that was only for automobiles. All of our semi-traffic goes straight back, and the dirt, or the level of the dirt from our property to theirs, up front, we're about eighteen to twenty feet taller, and they're wanting us to move all that dirt at our cost. And then, on the back, they went ahead and told us that, and we've met with them twice. Larry said three to four times, we've only met with them twice. And everything that they've told us, they have not followed through with. As the attorney said, they talked about moving all the dirt, laying concrete back down, and doing all the bins at a lower level, the, you know, the road height. And they were supposed to come back to us in October or November. They never came back to us whatsoever. They went ahead and, just from the grade stakes, and I'm not an engineer, and I'm not an architect or any of that kind of stuff, or surveyor, but I can read numbers, and looking at their grade stakes, they're going to be about five feet lower than I am in the back, where they told us we were good. And then, with them being five feet lower, I'm not going to be able to get semi-traffic in. And then, I was told not that long ago, this morning, by the attorney, that they're planning on putting a retaining wall up along the property line. They're planning on moving the dirt back on my property, dropping it five feet, to make sure their property runs efficient, and they're able to do everything they want to do on their property. But then, I'm holding the cost of mine. And then, they're pushing me to the south against Copperfield, where an embankment would have to be done for me to lower the ground anymore, would drop me probably about fifty feet lower than Copperfield. So, they have not been working with us at all. They've been just pushing forward, doing what they want to do, and Larry has led you to believe that they've been working with us, and they have not. I am not against their development over there, but I don't want to have to pay to have my business redone. I've been there for thirty years, it's a successful business, and I should not have to pay to have all the dirt removed, get down to the height that we need to get, and take all that cost. It, it's not fair. And if they want to do the development, that's fine, but they should take all that expense and go ahead and pay for that, for what they're doing to me. He talks about how it's going to benefit me. It doesn't benefit me at all. Right now, what I have benefits me perfectly. The only thing that doesn't work for me is trying to get out on the highway, and I've been after the state for two years to put a traffic light in, because we cannot go south. All of our traffic has to go north, go down to Hundred Ninety Second, and cut back and go back south, because we can't get out. But I, like I say, I've tried working with them, they don't want to work with us, they're not in good faith whatsoever, even though they say they are. And I've got a business that's going to start in the spring, and I've got stuff every place, because I don't know where I can put it, because I can't move all the dirt out. I'm probably talking a couple million dollars to move the dirt off my property, to get it down the height they want to put it to. And then, if they put a retaining wall up, I'm really screwed. So, I'm asking that you put this off, let us get our survey and our engineer in there to see where we're at, so we can get through the, the lies that are being told, and we can get down to showing the truth of what it's going to take to do it. Because, like I say, everything they've told us, they haven't followed through on any of it. And that's why we've been kind of pushing off and not doing anything, thinking they were going to do what they said they were going to do. Well, they haven't. So, I'm asking the board now not to pass this, but put it back, and let us get the information and give it to you, so you have the proper information, so it does not affect my business. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
If I may just say a couple more things. One, I didn't give you the prices of that, of the two. One, I didn't give you the prices of the two items, I don't remember exactly what they were, but one was about $200,000 to build the new bins, and the other one was about $100,000 for the concrete. I may have that backwards, but it was a significant amount of money. We figure that in order to move all the dirt and do all the work that it would cost, the rate that Vinton Street is now would cost us about a million and a half dollars in order to get that done. Now, maybe we get that out of the property when they foreclose, but it's going to make it a huge problem in the interim, and it'd be much better, I believe, for everybody if we put this off, give us an opportunity to come back quickly to you and get the information in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, proponents rebuttal time?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Larry Jovan, 11440 West End Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. We have met numerous times with the Rock Place, and we're at a complete impasse. Public Works was part of those meetings, Nebraska Department of Transportation was part of those meetings. We heard all sorts of stuff. We heard, "You've got to remove 60,000 cubic yards of dirt from my site, you have to build me a million and a half dollar retaining wall against the residential neighbors to the back," which the planning department said, "We'll never let you do." We heard that we had to shift and take all of his storage bins and push them back closer to the residential neighborhood. We heard that, "Pay me $12 million and you can have the property." We heard all sorts of things. This, of course, is another delay. I mean, how do you try to kill projects? Money and delays. I mean, those are the two things that I think I heard just a minute ago. We have done nothing more than, or less than, act in good faith on this deal. We've been trying to work, we've been working on this for nine months, trying to get something pinned down, and we hear something different every time. This is the grade that currently exists. There is about a 20-foot grade here. Currently, he accesses his property through his customer location, and then also, then he brings his trucks in here, from what I understand. What this shows is, and so I don't know, there's no more engineering that needs to be done. I think that all the engineering has been done here, and it is a public street, it is for the benefit of the public generally, and that's why we have laws in place to provide for this type of situation. But from this point, all the way back to the eastern boundary line, we're at grade with Vinton Street. There is, there is, the elevations are 1204 and 1204, 1204, 1202. We're talking about a two-foot grade change over, you know, let's call it a third of the property is at grade. There's plenty of opportunities. The Public Works Department has been great because they said, "You know what? You can access Vinton Street anywhere you want, we'll accommodate it." Currently, this is about a 20-foot grade differential, he can't access this anyway. This is relatively useless property. If there's a retaining wall that has to be installed, first of all, it's paid for by the public, SED has to construct that if there's a need for stabilization of the wall. But we are also required to provide reasonable access at all points and times, and we'll work with him about the phasing of the project, we'll work with him about accessing Vinton Street where he can access it. The bottom line is, I think it's pretty clear, that the access on 204th and Vinton Street is substantially better with a dedicated left, a dedicated right, the five lanes, the two lanes in, the three lanes out, the Signal, and the Vinton Street being constructed all the way along the frontage of his property to the east to serve not only his property, his proposed development, but the 200 acres immediately east of this. So I, I don't think, I always take exception when people say, "We lied and we misrepresented." I think everyone knows that, I don't think that's the way we operate, and I think we've been nothing but upfront and open about what we're trying to accomplish here. We have to move this forward because we can't keep playing games, and it seems to me that's what we're doing right now, and we have been for quite a while, and I guess we have to be done playing the games, move forward. The law requires we negotiate in good faith, we have every intention to do that, we have every intention to continue to work with Mr. Hafke and his attorney. We're not trying to shut anybody off, but at some point, you have to say enough's enough, and you've got to move the deal forward. It's, whether he likes it or not, it's for his benefit. The master plan, 165-acre mixed-use center, commercial mixed-use all the way to his southern boundary with a fully signalized, improved access on 204th Street, that's of no value? I don't know. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we close the public hearing. Mr. Jerem.
Mr. Jovan.
Yes.
Mr. Monahan. Could you leave that engineering, the topographical map up? If you could stay nearby, Mr. Jovan.
I will.
If you could slide over to the mic, you have to say your name again.
I'm sorry, Tom Monahan, 1403 Farnham Street.
Thank you. I'm trying to figure out, there were some things as you went through pretty concisely, and I want to thank you for the excellent use of the time to make your presentation.
Probably too quick, but...
But where, where is, I think you said now the semis for your client come to the east and then enter, where do they enter today?
They come up through this way. They come up here, and you see this kind of brown stuff here where my finger is? Those are the bins now.
So what, what would prevent the stone place from having the trucks either exit where the grade is at 1204 or 1202?
My understanding, well, my understanding is that they're going to have a rock wall here, a retaining wall, which will then make it difficult for the trucks to come where they usually are.
Right.
So, so then they will come back here, and the idea that some of the conversations we had was to move the bins back here. And that's not, that's not cheap, but that was some of the conversation. The last time we met was, I believe, in August. I can remember what I wore, I can remember what he wore, but I don't remember the exact date. But, so these...
Hawaiian shirts?
I'm sorry?
Hawaiian shirts of some sort, or...
He was dressed a little more casually. I typically try to dress up when I go to a fancy meeting, but I didn't when I come to the meeting last time. So it was going to be moved back here, and there were a variety of discussions. He was right, there was a variety of different discussions, including putting a wall here, and because, you see this pile here? That's a high mound of dirt. This pile here is another high mound of dirt. It is not inexpensive to move those, and that's about where the bins were going to have to go.
Well, I need to ask you...
Okay, sorry.
I wasn't making my question clear. If the trucks entered where the 1204, or about where that is, in between the two 1204 elevations, where there looks like there's a driveway today, what would prevent the trucks from accessing the bins?
The bins are way down over here, and we, because of the different grade levels, and maybe Mr. Hafke can explain this better than I, but everybody agreed that the bins would have to be moved because the trucks wouldn't be able to access it and get back around to them.
Okay.
And mostly because of these dirt movement, I mean, as you can see, there's, there's not a good path.
Yeah, I didn't, I can't, I'm having a hard time focusing in very clearly on this photo, is to, because it appeared to me, I had the impression coming in here today, there was a significant grade change all through the, as you moved east on Vinton, or what will be Vinton.
Well, this, this grade along here, I believe, works this way, but it doesn't work this way.
Okay. I don't know if there's an engineer in the house, but I thought I heard there was.
Yes, there is.
Okay. Because I'm in way over my head right now.
Well, and that's, and that's what, when we hired Brad Blakeman, he said, "Before we can do anything here, we need, we need a survey..."
Right.
"...of all of this." And, and, and he's looked at it, and, and we agree. We probably should have done that some time ago, but we were meeting at the time, and we're having discussions. And as I said, the last one was in August, we haven't met since then, we haven't talked since then.
Thank you. Let me talk to the engineer for a second.
Okay.
You have to tell me who you are.
Jeff Elliott, 17007 Marcy Street. I am one of the developers, and I am also a registered engineer, so hopefully can answer your questions, Mr. Jerem.
Would you please explain the grade change from what I've been referring to as this driveway, which is at the 1204 elevation level on the east side of the stone place's property? Yes?
So the elevation from the exist, or from the proposed Vinton Street, 1204, to the Rock Place is virtually level.
Okay.
I think what Mr. Monahan was saying...
And then, once you enter, once you enter to the south, assuming you're in a semi and you're 54 to 64 feet in, or whatever the length of the semi is, and you want to turn to go west to access those bins, so you've come in this driveway, now how do you get to those bins?
If I were to do it, I would enter the driveway, I believe there's a drive lane here, you can drive up, drive around the bins, and then circulate back and back onto the...
And then what is a grade change in that span?
In this spans?
Yes. 1204 to 12...
1204 to... About 12, 1216.
Okay, so it's about 12 feet?
Right.
Okay, over approximately...
Over probably 200 feet, something like that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr., is it Hatch?
Hafke.
Tell me why what I just heard from Mr. Elliott...
Do you want me to say my name first?
Yes.
Michael Hafke with the Rock Place. Semis are about 75 feet nowadays. They're not 50, they're not 65. If you go ahead and you, you're shown back here, you want to come down at this 1200, and you want to come up here to this, so basically, you want to enter back here, you want to come way back here and come back up. You're about, like you said, what'd you say, 12 to 16 feet, right in there? You're 12 to 16 feet. If we go ahead and make a road and swing all the way back up there, we lose a whole bunch more space that we can use because we've got to make big ramps for these trucks to go in and out. We have about 20 semis come in a day, of one, just end dumps and grain hoppers. That's not including flatbeds. Let's add another 10 for flatbeds. So we have to keep the semi-traffic in one area and keep them circling the same way. If we push them up with the customers, now we're going to have fatalities, and we're going to have another issue. And I don't want my insurance coming up, and maybe the city's insurance will cover us.
So is there not any roadway now between the, what is that, what I'm calling the 1204?
No, there's no roadway. We're basically coming, right now, there's no semi-traffic on the bottom half. We basically, from here, this is the main drive, we pull our semis up here, they come back around here, we unload them, we ship them right back around here and ship them right back down the drive.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Those are the questions I have. It seems to me that there's some questions about how this would all flow if, if there's the need to take, as there appears to be, from, as you said, where the roadway needs to be to accommodate the new signal and the intersection improvements, that perhaps, Mr. Jovan, the developers aren't being fully mindful. I know you said that, hey, we've talked to them, we'll continue to talk to them, but, you know, what, what would, what would prevent, and, you know, between now and, say, January 8th, in that time, what would it impair your project to get those answers, questions, or the questions answered from the stone company's perspective as to how this new flow would work for semis?
Well, what I would say about that is that moving this project forward shouldn't change anything as far as what's going to occur here. You know, the eminent domain laws require that we pay fair market value for the taking, fair market value for any temporary construction easement, and if there are any severance damages, what they call them, meaning damages to the remainder because he has to do something else, that's all compensable, and, and, and that can all be dealt with. That doesn't mean we just, you know, fall down and, and, and don't negotiate because the law also requires we negotiate in good faith. The problem we have is we have obligations to put in the infrastructure, we have timeframes, there's lots of people that, there are contracts on, again, the level of service here at the intersection of Vinton and 204th is a level of service F. It fails today. And, and he just said the number of trucks he has coming in daily, we're not going to stop that during construction, but what we're going to provide is a very good connection point that is, I think, ultimately going to make him very happy because it's going to provide much better access for his trucks, much better access for his customers, and it's going to allow the development. I don't think slowing this up changes anything.
You would agree with me, he doesn't sound very happy yet.
Uh-huh. Well, I understand that. But, but, I mean, I don't think slowing this down stops or changes anything. I mean, the issue is...
What you're saying, if I hear you correctly, just because we've got a lot more items to do, people waiting to be heard on their other cases, you, what you're saying is that'll all get worked out either before there has to be a taking or as a part of a taking, and to the extent that he's got to modify his property and can prove that, he's going to get compensated for that.
I, I think, I think that's right. I mean, so I think all of those issues can be dealt with.
You've answered my questions, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry, don't go too far yet, please. And actually, I'll, I'll ask this maybe of Mr. Fenslow first. Have all conditions of the, from the preliminary plat been addressed and satisfied?
Yeah, Dave Fenslow, planning director, yes, they have.
Okay, so, and that's obviously why we have the final plat in front of us. It seemed to me, if you could put that, the aerial back up if...
The aerial?
Yeah, please, aerial with the topographic. Aerial with the topos.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. And I'm not going to redesign the pot here, and I think Mr. Jerem's questions were perfect and on point, and obviously illustrate that what we do here today certainly does not preclude from those continuing discussions as it relates to the taking and any compensation that may result from, from those actions, but it sure seemed like the circulation that was described seemed a lot more abrupt as they do kind of more of a U-turn rather than something that brings them back down to an eastern part of Vinton that's more at grade. And I assume, obviously, with any drive aisle that, or driveway entrance to the property would be constructed so that those semis could make those movements. It also, you know, again, the, it also seems like it would further keep the separation between pedestrian, any pedestrian or customer traffic and the semi-traffic would certainly be further isolated as well.
I would agree.
So that's one of the safety issues as well as just the, and I think Mr. Hafke even said that most of his trucks, as, as they currently exit, they, they really can't take a left turn south on 204th, that they have to go to the north and up to, to make that movement. So I wanted to make sure that we were clear on, on the conditions of the preliminary plat that have been met, and that any action that we have here today does not stop the process for your continued negotiations as it relates to any compensation for your taking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No more lights, is there a motion?
I would move the layover to January 8th.
Moved and seconded to layover till January 8th. Mr. Harding, did you ever come in?
No.
Okay, no? Okay. Moved and seconded to move to January 8th, there are no further lights, profile.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
No.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 10, our motion approved, five to two. Items 14 to 17 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Briggs Place, located northwest of 44th and Douglas Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 14, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district and an R8 district, and to approve the development plan. Item 15, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Briggs Place Replat 8. Item 16, a resolution to approve the final plat for Briggs Place Replat 8. Now, item 17, a resolution to approve the Briggs Place subdivision agreement.
Public hearing agenda items numbers 14 through 17 are today. Proponents, please.
Tom McClay on behalf of, a proponent on behalf of 44th and Douglas LLC, I am, don't have the eloquence or the endurance of Mr. Jovan, so I would just go in to say I'm here to answer any questions. I very much appreciate working with you. I very much appreciate working with the Planning Department, glad to see Mister Fanslow back in their approval of this project, and hope to get your support.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Uh, Mister Harding?
I, I just wanted to thank Mister McClay for the endurance there, because I know when we started, he didn't have a beard. I think, Miss...
And there was no gray hair in it either.
Just a second, moved and seconded to approve items fourteen through seventeen, no further lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes.
Items fourteen through seventeen are approved, seven to zero. Items eighteen to twenty-two relate to the same project and can be considered together for Peaceful Oaks, located north of North Crest Drive and west of North Post Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item eighteen, an ordinance to rezone this property from D R District to R one District. Item nineteen, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Peaceful Oaks. Item twenty, a resolution to approve the final plat for Peaceful Oaks. Item twenty-one, a resolution to approve the special use permit application to allow development in the North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District at this location. Item twenty-two, a resolution, resolution to approve the Peaceful Oaks subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and agenda items numbers eighteen through twenty-two are today, proponents, please.
Sean Negus, Sean Negus Construction, on behalf of sixty-one hundred North Sixteenth Street, on behalf of the owners, just if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them, and that's all.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Moved and seconded to approve items eighteen through twenty, twenty-two, there are no lights, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes.
Items eighteen to twenty-two are approved, seven to zero. Items twenty-three and twenty-four can be considered together for property located at three-two-one-four L Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item twenty-three, an ordinance to rezone this property from R four District to C C District. Item twenty-four, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the M C C Overlay District to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing and agenda items numbers twenty-three and twenty-four today, proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mister Palermo.
Mister President, I was hoping there was somebody here for twenty-three or twenty-four to ask him a couple of questions, but I guess not. So, I'll, this will be rare that you hear from me about being against a small business that plans to open up for a small, it looks like a commercial kitchen, but the problem is I heard from other small businesses in the area that are successful, that they're worried about the parking from this particular building. The square feet's pretty small, the building's even smaller. I know the area well, I've driven by it many times, and there just is no way for a parking lot there. There's an alley nearby where maybe they would deliver goods or whatever there is, and unfortunately, we're many, many years away from better transportation in the city where employees won't need a parking lot, but unfortunately, we're not there yet. So with the opposition I received from the small business owners nearby, I will not be in favor of twenty-three or twenty-four.
Is that a motion, or just?
Um...
Hold on.
You know what?
Yes, hold on, just a second.
You know what, because I would love...
We've got a couple of lights on, so...
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Mister Festerson.
Well, thanks, Mister President, and I'd be interested in having Councilmember Palermo finish his thought there, but I did drive by it with him today, too, and it is rare that an applicant wouldn't come to be here to answer any questions we may have, so that alone kind of tells me this isn't a candidate to be laid over, but I'd take his guidance on that. It, it was a very small property, and I can see it's just a commercial kitchen, it sounds like, to maybe do some catering, but there was no parking there, so maybe some conversation about how they would intend to handle that would make me feel more comfortable, too.
Thank you. Mister Harding?
Thank you, Mister President, I was going to suggest that maybe we should lay this over then, but it's in Mister Palermo's district, so I'll, I'll leave that decision up to him, but I would be supportive of the layover.
That's, that's a great idea, Mister Harding, thank you. And I'm not going to be against small businesses if there's a reason to hear him out, so, yes, that would be, the best thing to do is lay this over, move to lay this over till January eighth.
Moved and seconded to prove, to, to lay over twenty-three and twenty-four till January eighth, there are no further lights, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes.
Items twenty, or motion approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-five, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the M C C Overlay District to incorporate into that district the property located at six-zero-one-zero North Forty-ninth Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and agenda item number twenty-five is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty-five, no lights, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes.
Item twenty-five is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-six, an ordinance to rezone property located at three-seven-two-three South Sixteenth Street from R four District to R four District.
Public hearing...
Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
I'm sorry, jumped ahead of you. Maybe we're getting, maybe we're getting punch drunk. Public hearing and agenda item number twenty-six is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, proponents? Pub, thank you.
My direction is thirty-seven, twenty-three, Sur, sixteen Street, Comahne, Nebraska, sixty-eight, one hundred and seven.
My name is Christina Williamson, I am at the Planning Department, I am going to help interpret for Mrs. Hernandez. She's just here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank, she's answering any questions we might have? Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty-six, no further lights, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes.
Item twenty-six is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item twenty-seven, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the M C C Overlay District to incorporate into that district the property located at five-six-four-six North Ninetieth Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and agenda item number twenty-seven is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Moved and seconded to approve item twenty-seven, no lights, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes.
Item twenty-seven is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-eight, an ordinance to rezone the property located east of Two Hundred and Sixteenth Street and Greenbrier Drive from A G District to R two District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and agenda item number twenty-eight is today, proponents, please.
Thank you, Mister President. Members of the council, Jeff Elliott, one-seven-zero-zero-seven, Marcy Street, here to represent the applicants, Chad and Holly Iker, who would like to build a single-family residence on this property, and thus, our need to rezone it to A G, from A G to R two. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, Mister Harding?
Thank you, Mister President. Mister Elliott, I had a couple of questions real quick.
Sure.
I know at the Planning Board, there was some discussion about some drainage issues. I assume those have been addressed or resolved, or is that something you can address?
We did meet with the neighbors that were downstream of the property. We committed to them to monitor the situation with them as time went on, and if there is any difficulties, they should call us, and, and I think they're satisfied, obviously, they're not here, so...
Okay.
We did meet with them.
Thank you, thanks. Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item twenty-eight, there are no further lights, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes.
Item twenty-eight is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-nine, an ordinance to rezone the property located southeast and southwest of Twenty-second Street and Willis Avenue from R four District and G C District to R four District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and agenda item number twenty-nine is today, proponents, please.
I am Terry Morrison with Airheart Griffin and Associates, three-five-five-two, Farnham Street. I'm here on behalf of the Jesuit Academy, who is the owner. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty-nine, there are no further lights, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes.
Item twenty-nine is approved, seven to zero. Item thirty, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Pheasant Bar and Grill located at one-three-nine-zero-nine S Plaza.
Public hearing and agenda item number thirty is today, proponents, please.
Yeah, I'm Lloyd Kaburu, that nine oh four, that nine oh nine, Milan Plaza. I'm here to answer any question you may ask.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item thirty, no lights, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes.
Item thirty is approved, seven to zero. Item thirty-one, an application for an addition to White House Bar and Grill's Class C liquor license located at seven-seven-six-eight Cass Street for an outdoor area approximately twelve feet by twenty-seven feet to the south.
Public hearing and agenda item number thirty-one is today, proponents, please.
Hi, my name's Lisa Blue with White House Bar and Grill. I'm just here if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mister Festerson?
Thanks, Mister President, just a couple of follow-up questions for you. So what we're trying to do here is an outdoor area, right, just to the south of the building?
It is, it'll face south towards Cass Street, basically, but, I mean, our parking lot is, like, we'll have our patio and then the parking lot, and then Cass Street.
And is this for outdoor smoking, probably, and...
Just outdoor area, yeah, smoking, just people to hang out out there, intugated area.
Any music, too, or how will you handle that?
We won't have mu, I mean, if the door's open, they'll hear the jukebox from inside, but we're not going to have anything out there.
And then because it does get kind of close to Cass Street there, how, how will, how will the appearance look? What kind, what kind of fencing, how will you handle that?
Um, we're doing black wrought iron, or a metal fence, and then we'll have a top on it to make sure that it's high enough for people. It'll, it'll be black, and, I mean, we haven't purchased it yet, we're waiting for everything, so...
Okay, so it sounds like nice fencing, and there's still a remainder of the parking lot that's in between the street and the fence anyway, probably, right?
All of the parking lot, basically, yeah, because it, it's, it's open right now, it's just not fenced in.
Okay. Well, I know you're also a perpetual leader in the Kino business, too, for the city at your spot, so our friends from the zoo that are here appreciate that.
Yes, we are.
All right. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded to approve item thirty-one, there are no further lights, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes.
Item thirty-one is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers thirty-two through forty-two were held on December fourth, twenty eighteen. We are going to take off of consent, item thirty-two and items, items thirty-two and thirty-five. So the motion would be for...
So I'll move to approve thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-six through forty-two.
Moved and seconded to approve what Miss Melton just said. There are no lights, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes.
Items thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-six through forty-two are approved, seven to zero. Item thirty-two, an ordinance to designate the automobile sales building and Army Corps Laboratory located at four-twenty South Eighteenth Street as a landmark pursuant to the Landmark Heritage Preservation Ordinance of the City of Omaha. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing was held, this is council meeting time, Mister Harding?
There we go. We had some discussion among council members about this, this, the case for the county to be able to use eminent domain is tied up in the courts right now, and I think it might be wise for us to put this on, lay this over until the courts have had a chance to hear, or to weigh in on, on the matter since the courts took this up before this application came to us, so I would make a motion to lay it over until probably, our calendar doesn't go fast.
We have new ones on the way.
I'll do some quick math. How about, let's, January fifteenth, twenty-two, my eyes aren't that good, probably the twenty-ninth, because I don't know that we meet on the, do we meet on the twenty... Probably the 29th, because I don't know that we meet on the, do we meet on the 20th?
We don't meet on the 22nd.
So why don't we lay this over until, uh, January 29th, uh, 2019?
Second. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, the, um, thank you. Generally, my position is when a council member wants to lay it over, it doesn't cause me any heartburn. It sounds reasonable to me. I just wanted to let the people know who came, including Mr. Perrin, that the designation, as far as I see it, is, is something that's uncontroversial. It's supported by the Planning Department, Planning Board. I intended to vote yesterday. If it came up for vote, we'll be supporting this. In terms of the process, um, it appears that things are moving, or could be soon moving, eastward a block, and, and perhaps to the extent that there's some additional time granted through this, that that'll get sorted out, too. But to Mr. Perrin and his building, clearly the presentation he made and, and the building itself qualifies the department's on-board, the, the board. It sounds like it's not really controversial here, but if the layover is what we want to do, then we might as well do it.
Uh, Mr. Harding.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that by requesting a layover, I was in no way trying to give an opinion on one way or the other. I just, uh, I thought it was important to note that since this came to us after the fact that it's already been tied up in the courts, that I think we should let that process wait, or, uh, we should let that process, uh, go through its motion. Thank you.
Mr. Perrin, did you want to say something?
I can correct you on dates, if that's okay?
Sure.
If I can help you out. Bob Perrin, 1101 South 36th. Well, first of all, the building should be an historic building, no matter who owns it, so whether eminent domain occurs and the county takes it, it should still be an historic building. We should protect it and honor it in that sense. The only thing is that the court date is that the, the county has until February, or January 21st to reply with their brief, and then we have until February 4th to make a response to that reply. So it'll probably be mid-February before this actually goes through the courts on the first series of claims.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, and maybe we have to bring it back up at that time, but, um, I think, I don't know, I wasn't at the county board meeting today. I don't know if they approved an offer or made an offer that...
Well, we got a...
Audience.
I don't, I won't put them out of the spot. Well, if you want to just come down and tell us your, your process. Welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of, of the Commission. Clark Duda, 13205 North River Drive, Omaha, here as a member of the Douglas County Board. The MUD offer was listed on our agenda as a discussion-only item this morning. Our action is for next week, a week from today. We are scheduled to take a vote on the offer to MUD. The discussion today, and I'll try to be brief, but there are seven commissioners clearly in agreement that we need to expand the courthouse. Once you enter the, bring the juvenile detention center, it becomes a little more controversial, but the courthouse annex, everybody is on board with that. We only have two locations to pick from that are next to the courthouse. If the MUD sale, for any reason, should fall through, this is our Plan B. We have no other places to go. We have to have one block or the other. We're trying our best to get the MUD block. If that does not work out, we have to come back to this block.
Right, and it, and it sounds like this time would allow you to get the answer to your...
Uh, it is my intent to have the board vote. I hope we vote next week so that at the January 2nd MUD, their next regular monthly meeting, I told them I would come back. They wanted the county board to vote first. We will have voted. I hope that on January 2nd, they give us a response. Time will tell.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And good to see you. There are no more lights. It's been moved and seconded to lay over till January 29th. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion approved, seven to zero.
35. 35 is the other one.
Item 35, an ordinance to continue the ongoing maintenance of portions of Abbott Drive by Lanahan Nurseries in accordance with the original intentions of the Peter Keywitt Foundation and their donation for this project.
Ms. Melton.
Yes, excuse me. At this time, I'm actually going to make a motion to lay this over as well for the reason that we had some discussions this morning. First, in regards to, uh, the city doing a contract for 10 years without a bidding process. There was just some concerns there, and I think we had some discussions with our Parks Director and our attorneys, and, and there may be some agreement to maybe reduce that, that time. We have some agreements that were made with Keywitt, uh, which don't specify time, so what I would like is maybe, is a layover. Don't know if one week will do it. We may want to do the, when we first come back.
January 8th?
January 8th. So I'll make a motion to lay it over to January 8th, as long as I'm getting an okay. January 8th.
Moving seconded to move item 35, uh, to, uh, layover item 35 to January 8th. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 43 through 56 are today. If you wish to address the council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Good almost evening, Council. Josh Todd, Omaha Sports Commission, um, addressing item number 56, here to answer any questions for you, if you guys have any.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, that public hearing is closed.
Don't go anywhere, Josh.
Okay, Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was, and actually, I was going to ask a question or make a statement on, uh, number 56 as well. If you don't have the numbers, I'll give them, but about $75 million impact, economic impact that the 2016 trials, swim trials had in Omaha and generated another almost $5 million in, in sales tax as well.
That is correct.
Thank you. So, um, I assume we'll, we'll, and we're also working on a deal maybe for, um, keeping going in the pools here locally, too, as, after the, the 2020 trials.
Yes, so the, the rights fee, the $2.5 million, which this money would go towards is the, the rights fee to host the event, uh, which brings the impact numbers that you just mentioned. Another $600,000 that we're also raising is our joint venture purchase of the actual warm-up pool to, A, either keep it here for, for the 2024 trials negotiations, or, um, sell it to the next city that would like to have a pool.
Okay. Thank you for your work on this, too.
Yeah, oh, you're very welcome.
And then I'll just ask Mr. Curtis if he could just address the, the funding of this.
Steve Curtis, City Finance. The funding we'd always talked about was $250,000 over three years, or in our case, what we'd actually budgeted was $250,000 in 2019 and $500,000 in 2020. Uh, it became clear that might not have been exactly what we all thought we were supposed to do, and through a lot of discussion with the Sports Commission and the Mayor's Office, we figured out here recently that with the end-of-the-year surplus projected to be at least two or three million, we could take $250,000 from this, which would have otherwise just gone to the 2020, $500,000 anyway. Pay it now and just reduce the 2020 obligation to $250,000.
Does that finish your line?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Uh, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just wanted to express my support as well. It's a great partnership with the Sports Commission and the private sector to get these things done in Omaha. Huge economic impact. 2020 is going to be a really big year for Omaha, not just the swim trials, so we appreciate all you're doing with the rest of those events, too. But since you're here, I wanted to give you a chance, too, to talk about the event that just happened over the weekend, that I appreciated having a chance to participate with you on. It didn't have quite the economic impact, I think, of the swim trials, but if you want to talk about the curling World Cup and success of that event, please go ahead.
Yeah, we just, uh, that's why my voice sounds a little hoarse. Got, got a little cold going in, into the cold from the even colder weather all week last week. So, yeah, we hosted the Curling World Cup, which is a stop for the World Curling Federation. We had the only stop in North America. Councilman Festerson came out and threw the first stone in our opening ceremony, so we really appreciate that. He was right on target with some good sweeping. Uh, yeah, so we're still computing numbers. It just ended on Sunday night, but it, it will have a pretty good economic impact as well, especially when it comes to, uh, the global television audience that was, had Omaha front and center for the whole week. We were live on national TV, NBC Sports Network, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, and, and Sunday night. So it was a, uh, it was, the crowds weren't huge, obviously like a swim crowd, but it is still curling, and the World Federation was thrilled to be here. They're actually still concluding their, their annual board meeting in Omaha as we speak, so that's 15 members of the board from around the world, uh, which was, uh, it was a great event. We had 32 Olympians in town from the 2018 Olympics alone, uh, representing 11 countries, so it was an awesome honor to host this event.
Yeah, I want to commend you for doing that. I think that was the true impact, was the, the TV exposure. I think participants thought it was very high quality, and it's, that's not easy to do from scratch, uh, like you did, but I think the real attraction was the international audience that achieved for the participants and for Omaha, so thanks for...
Yeah, and the economic impact was nothing to frown at. We'll, we'll, we'll report those numbers once we have them, so it's, you know, we had quite a few hotel stays with the international teams and coaches and fans. And, yeah, they're already wanting to negotiate with us. They, they would have signed us to host again next year here on the spot, but we wanted to crunch the numbers first and make sure it was an event that was worth hosting again next year.
That's great. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
That question is, is there, is there any possibility of any professional status for, uh, Councilmember Festerson in the curling?
I, I saw him curl. He's, he's, he's pretty good.
He's pretty good.
He said he didn't do it for about a year, and he was not rusty, I'll tell you that much.
Okay.
Team USA was impressed.
Okay, so if I hear something, then I, okay, thank you.
Is it true his, his stones curled left?
That was my first curling event I've witnessed in person. I'm from the desert, so anything on ice is impressive to me.
It's been moved and seconded, I think, to approve all the items in, in our consent agenda. Uh, there are no further lights. I think it was moved and seconded, wasn't it?
Yeah, I, I did the whole agenda.
You did the whole agenda, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I was seconded.
Okay. Uh, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 43 through 56 are approved, seven to zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item 57, ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on all lots and pieces of real estate within Street Improvement District 6879 in the City of Omaha to cover the cost of constructing and improving Leavenworth Street from 93rd Street to 94th Street.
Public hearing agenda item number 57 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item. Or is there both? I'm sorry, yeah. Hey, I do what I looked at. It's been moved and seconded to, is there a second? Moving seconded to approve item 57. No lights. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 57 is approved, six to one. Item 58, an ordinance to approve a restated memorandum of agreement with Professional Firefighters Association of Omaha Local 385 concerning health care trust establishment for a period of January 1st, 2019 to December 31st, 2023.
Is there a motion? Moving seconded to approve item 58. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to add that after speaking to the president of the Local 385, that usually we do vote last, but in this particular case, his membership originally had a supermajority, and he had no indication that that would change, so, uh, that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 58. No further lights. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Festerson. Counsel, uh, motion is appro, item 58 is approved, six to zero. Councilmember Festerson passed twice due to potential conflict of interest. Item 59, an ordinance to approve the Bureau of Justice Assistance Fiscal Year 2018 National Sexual Assault Kit Initiative Grant Award in the amount of $1,901,640 during the project period of October 1st, 2018 to September 30th, 2021.
Public hearing agenda item number 59 is today. Proponents, please, and thank you all for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman, uh, Mr. President, excuse me, and council members. I'm Elizabeth Power at 3801 Harney Street in Omaha. I represent the Women's Center for Advancement. I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I'm Lieutenant Tracy Shear with the Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street, and I'm just here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I think we're all in agreement that things need to be done to help the, the youth, the children, but I want you to think about something. There's...
Um, the Grant for Sexual Assault Kits Initiative.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was just wondering why you would be a guy...
Yeah, I was wondering why you'd be opposed to that.
You can be opposed to that if you really want, but if I can...
All right, there, uh, uh, there are no, any other opponents that wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Melton.
Thank you very much. I, I just want to thank all of you and Elizabeth. I also want to say fabulous job on the, on the radio, on...
Thank you.
Um, really kind of letting it out that there are probably more important things like getting sexual assault kits tested than criticizing "Baby, It's Cold Outside", the, the song. I really liked your, I really liked your take, um, but I, you know, a lot of work has, has gone into this, and this is something that, um, we've needed for, for many years. Um, and so I want to thank everybody here from Omaha Police Department, working with, Women's Center for Advancement, and then all the other people that, um, really have put the work in to get, because these grant applications are difficult. They're not easy to get. There's a lot of work that has to go into the applications, and then a lot of follow-up as well to make sure that it gets done, so this is, this is something that's very important, but is also a lot of work for, for many people, so thank, thank you all for, for your efforts.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I also wanted to add my, my thanks as well, and, um, give you a chance also to talk about this a little bit more in the respect of what changes here from previous practice and what has evolved in terms of our collection of sexual assault kits and the testing of them and potential evidence in that respect. A very important topic, I think, when we talk about violent crime in the community, which has been going down, uh, with the exception of sexual assaults, which may be an increase in reporting, uh, but that's, uh, a positive out of that mix, if, in fact, that is, that's what is occurring, but nevertheless, very important to be collecting these kits for victims and to be testing them and have our police department and, and court systems be aware of, um, this, this new process, so if you could describe that a little bit for everybody.
Um, well, what we've been learning is that there's a value in testing these. Um, in the past, it's always been an evaluation about whether the, the test would actually help court proceedings, and in general, the reason that we have so many untested kits is it, um, either comes down to a consent issue where the suspect says, um, I had, we had consent, it was consensual sex, or the victims don't work with the investigator, and, um, in past practices, it's always, um, looked on as if it's not going to further prosecution, why would we test those? We now know that there is value in testing everything, um, even if it's not going to go to prosecution because there may be other offenders, or the offender may be out, involved in other crimes, that we do have active victims, um, that are working with investigators, and we can proceed with those. I have implemented, or we, the Omaha Police Department, has implemented that every kit starting in 2018 is tested and is on rotation to be tested, so that as part of this kit, we had to come up with a plan, um, for making sure that we didn't have untested kits again, and we've already started the process, so as of January 1, 2018, all of those kits, there's a process for making sure that those all get tested, um, so that we're constantly staying in compliance and looking at best practices.
Great. So going forward, all kits will be tested, and what this grant does, the $1.9 million is allow you to, um, address the backlog, let's say, of ones that have not been tested so far.
Well, it allows us to also go back and investigate those crimes, um, to have people on staff to investigate those, so that when they are tested and results come back, we have people, we have staff, we have at the Y, the WCA to assist those victims, and we have the court staff that can also assist with reopening those investigation and, and going forward with those investigations. So it's a lot more than just testing them, but it's also putting a second set of eyes on them and being able to investigate them.
I think that's great, and I think it also encourages, uh, victims of crime to do their, that reporting, which is very important as well, so...
I hope so.
Thanks for your work, and I look forward to supporting this next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, if you could stay there. Um, I, I also believe this is a very important issue and, and helping, uh...
Victims.
Optimistically thinking, at least, that you'll be able to clear some past cases and, and, and help those who have been victims of these sorts of horrible crimes, some closure and, and a sense of healing to begin. But I was kind of astounded this morning when I heard the amount of, of the backlog that existed, and I don't mean this in a critical sense, but it is just an amazing accumulation of kits that had not been tested, so would you share with us the amount of the backlog, how many this will allow to be tested, and when you anticipate will be caught up?
Actually, I'll, I'll admit that I was surprised, too. Um, I've only been at the Special Victims Unit for a little over a year, and going through this process, we actually, I met with the Evidence and Property Manager. We actually physically counted every single kit that was down there. Um, I believe it's just under 2,000 kits that are in the Evidence and Property Room, and we have been going through all of those kits to see which have been tested and which haven't been, and because they date back, they, they predate our electronic reporting system, um, that means that we have to look at every single report, and so those 2,000 reports were not completely through, all of them, and where we come up with the 1,500[1696.88] with the 1,500 number is I looked at the ones that we have inventoried, and of those that we've inventoried, it's a little over half, and it was about 893 kits that weren't tested, and so I applied the percentages to the full amount and came up with an estimate between 14 and 1,500 kits. They do date back, um, we do have some dating back to the 1990s, 1980s, um, they get sporadic back at that time, but understand that there is, we weren't destroying kits, we also have a 20-year time hold by statute that we have to hold on to them, so if we weren't testing them, they were just accumulating down there. And now with best practices, hopefully we'll still have them, but they will have been tested going through.
Did you want to add something to that?
I wanted to add something. I think it's important to note too that Omaha is by no means the last community to be doing this. This is something that every community in the nation is looking at, and, um, we're really closer to the forefront of doing this than the back end, which is important. And, um, you know, we've all come together and it's just been great to even see your support for this, that we are, we're learning, we're improving, and we are, uh, making Omaha safer and we're providing great support to survivors of violent crimes.
That's great. One of the questions I had too for the police was, as I understand it, because of the type of reporting that follows the testing, um, the, the testing has to be performed by certain labs with certain credentials, and that in this case would be the state lab rather than UNMC, um, here in Omaha. And so, given past, uh, concerns that Chief Schmoder has expressed with regard to the timing, um, or the, I would say the lack of speed of the state lab, um, are you confident that those issues will be worked through and is UNMC aware that they're, they don't have this certification or?
Well, it's not that UNMC doesn't have the certification, but we would have had to have paid for each kit to go to UNMC, um, and NSP got a grant specifically for these kits. So where we have a time limit usually on regular kits, we're not going to have that same, um, time delay because they're going to have, um, lab technicians that are solely for this purpose. So as far as the kit initiative goes, we shouldn't have those problems. UNMC, I'm, I'm also at the point where I also believe that I'm kind of glad that UNMC is not part of this grant, um, because we do pay them and we do want quick turns, turnarounds with them, and so not bogging them down with the cases that I need quick turnarounds on.
All right, the active ones right now?
Yeah, the ones that we know we have immediate concerns, we have immediate suspects, um, that's where we put our money to pay for those kits. But rest assured that for this, uh, uh, kit initiative, um, NSP has hired technicians that will do nothing but test these kits.
Great, and then you get the results and then they get reported to the national database?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, this, this is a, um, I don't know whose idea, did the YWCA bring this idea to the city?
I don't believe we can take credit for that.
This, this is good teamwork, and this is, this is the private and public partnership at its best, and we look forward to you going and getting some results and getting some people, um, brought to justice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
President? Mr. Dowding, earlier today, you looked up for me, you gave me this information, just so we're looking at, uh, how we are compared to other cities. About how many cities were involved in this grant?
Jim Dowding with the council staff. I believe at your request, I saw that there were 32 jurisdictions that had similar grants, totaling about 43 million. So that's for 2018.
Yeah, 2018. So, so there are other areas out there also looking, which I appreciate that we are one of those. As I'm looking at the dates, I'm a little bit confused here. It says, uh, from October 1st, 2018 to September 30th, 2021. Are those the, that apparently is a time, time limit for this, uh, $2 million expenditure?
Yes.
So everything should be done by then, is what, is that how I might to interpret that?
Your end date was three years?
Yeah, it says 21.
Yes, three years.
Okay.
From the end.
And it does appear that that's doable?
Yes, I'm hoping so with the extra staff that we'll be able to hire because of this grant, we'll have, um, enough staff to be able to do all of the investigating, um, getting them tested. Because the state has the dedicated lab technicians, that should not be a problem. It's the investigation afterwards, how long it takes to find, um, the victims and all of that, but yes, I anticipate we should be able to finish.
And that will take extra staff to complete that, this task?
Yes, because we're looking at adding another, if we, if we plan on testing 1,500 kits, and that would mean if we potentially reopen 1,500 sexual assaults. Based on the staff we have now, it would probably take me longer than three years.
Yeah, that's, okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. There are no more lights, next item.
Item 60, an ordinance to approve the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community-Oriented Policing Services Fiscal Year 2018 COPS Stop School Violence Prevention Program for a total program amount of $538,9291 during the project period of October 1st, 2018 to September 30th, 2020.
Public hearing agenda item number 60 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, council members. I'm Tish Mendick with the Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Larry Stor, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. Uh, again, I think we're all in agreement that some things need to be done. But from an outsider standpoint, as a citizen and just kind of looking at the overview of things in government, uh, common sense would ask some simple questions, like if we can't afford this, then maybe we shouldn't do it. If we have to go to the federal government and private.
60 is the stop, is the COPS STOP grant? This is a, it's the U.S. Department of Justice, so that it's, it's another grant from the federal government?
It's a grant.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we, that we were on the same, it's a grant, if the money doesn't come here.
Yes, right.
It will go.
I understand that.
Somewhere else. Okay, I just wanted to make sure you weren't talking about the Juvenile Justice Center because that's not, this has nothing to do with the Juvenile Justice Center.
Well, it's a stretch, but in a way it is.
It does.
If you'll let me finish, ma'am, it's my time, I think. The point being, common sense is, why do we need this in the first place? Define for the public, maybe the World Herald could do a, a major story, uh, with your input and input from, uh, Police Department, input from Sherwood Foundation, so that the citizens know what this is for. Do we have that much violence in our schools that we need this? Who's telling us we need this? Now, uh, I also noticed that from October 1st to September, common sense tells me, are we in arrears on this? There are some places in the country where, if you're $5 arrear on your property taxes, they take your house from you. This, uh, this implies that we're in arrears. We should have been paying this as of October 1st. Explain that away for us, please. Travel and training. Travel to where and training by who? Why isn't that local? Now, when that period of time ends and that grant goes away, who picks up the tab then? Is that similar to the lights going to the airport? That now that that grant by that private foundation is going away, the city has to pick that up, is that correct?
No.
Why wouldn't that apply to something like this? When that goes away in 20, uh, 2020, then the city, the taxpayers have to pick that up, is that correct?
No.
So we will stop the program then?
Not necessarily, but go ahead.
Okay. What I'm saying is, I'd like to see discussions of the, those things in the newspaper, but also on the radio stations, the TV stations, because, uh, I read the newspaper all the time and I've seen nothing on this yet. And I don't have time to come down and individually ask you guys what, what that's all about. I don't hear the police chief talking about it. I don't hear the federal government talking about it. But the citizens that have to pay property taxes, et cetera, would probably like to know why that's necessary. Now, the, the stretch that I'm talking about, and I'll be done in one second. Going back to 2014, I think it was about October, there was a contract signed with Douglas County. Sherwood Foundation was involved in that. The programs that we've been studying and hearing about and getting presentations on relate back to that time, if not before. So the question's again, common sense wise, why have those programs not worked? Why aren't they in the school system instead of in the juvenile center or instead of in the public schools? And now you have a learning community council that's taking other types of programs for younger kids, but they're building buildings that's costing taxpayers another assessment on top of what's already letting.
You're getting kind of off the subject now, Larry.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, you're.
It relates, it relates to the taxes I pay, sir.
No, you're getting back, you're getting off the subject now.
They, they will special assessment on top of what taxes we already pay.
There's no special assessment.
Question is, why is it, why are the not pro, programs not working?
Uh, there are no, um, uh, Mr. Festers.
Thanks, Mr. President. Well, I think, um, in addition to the topics we just discussed, sexual assaults and, um, mental health that we've talked a lot about in the last few weeks, one of the most important things we can be doing to address public safety in our community is to address violence prevention in the schools. So I very much welcome this topic, this, this agenda item and will support it next week. In fact, I thought it was important to highlight it a little bit today. Tish, if you would, talk about it a little bit more. I had a chance to talk with Deputy Chief Gonzalez over the lunch hour or two, and, um, I understand that, um, part of what this will do is create a hotline, if you will, or a phone line whereby, um, issues of concern can be discussed anonymously if needed, and that all metro area school districts are on board with this program and in fact, I think are already starting to use it. If you could go ahead and expand upon that a little bit.
Sure, um, they, we have six local school districts that are currently part of the threat assessment and crisis intervention team that we have put together. There is where the Ralston and Omaha Catholic Schools are going to come on board as well, so that'll bring us to eight schools. And we will implement a countywide anonymous reporting system that will include a hotline, uh, mobile app, website, and text reporting. So any community member, any school student, any school administration, any teacher can report any concern that they have to the anonymous reporting system and that those threats will trickle up to our threat assessment group that will review them.
So communication being the key, providing that forum, comparing notes, having professionals assess those threats and hopefully prevent them from ever happening in the first place, right?
Correct, exactly. The other part of the, um, grant funding will allow Omaha Police Department and Douglas County Sheriff's Office to go into each school building and perform a school safety audit, and then there is grant funding available to provide any recommended safety items for those schools, so.
Well, I very much welcome that program of work, and I think just about every parent in the city would as well. There was, there was one observation that it has already started, and that's true, um, that this work has already begun, but the grant is, um, now being presented to cover that cost, is that correct?
Correct, and right now each school district is doing something different, and our goal is to bring them all on the same threat assessment protocol and a unified team, and we have other agencies involved and other service providers available, so Region 6 is part of our group, Lutheran Family Services, Harlem Crisis Intervention Team, so we'll be able to offer more than just assessment, we can intervene with actual services on site too, so.
And who answers that phone call when someone calls?
So there's, um, two different things, and this is, this is part of, um, the TACET Teams project is to source this anonymous reporting system. Right now, we're looking at P3 Campus, which is used by Colorado Safe to Tell, many other, um, state and local agencies across the U.S., and then we're also working with Boys Town National Hotline, they're part of our team as well. So it's not all completely solidified, that is the part of the project for the grant.
Okay, so no number yet that you can talk about?
Not yet.
When the time comes, it'll be.
Correct.
Obviously publicized and talked about.
Absolutely. Part of the funding too will go, um, to a whole public awareness campaign, so.
About when do you think would that be in the program?
The goal is for the project timeline, the first quarter is to source the anonymous reporting system and the hotline, and then it, the next two quarters will be, um, training and implementation, so hopefully within nine months.
Okay, so maybe summer of 2019.
Right.
Will be live?
Right.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Harding.
Thank you, Mr. Acting President, is that my?
Temp.
Temp. I just, uh, uh, like the rest of us, we applaud the, the work that, that you're doing and trying to accomplish here. I was just telling Councilmember Melton that I get on a regular basis, um, uh, reports or, um, notifications from constituents about gangs in, in schools and, and to, to think that this doesn't occur throughout the city and that we need these types of services and efforts, um, I think we would be, um, ignorant of, of the fact that these conditions do exist, so, like the others, I applaud you for the efforts and appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you.
No further lights, next item.
Non-action items. Items 61 through 66 do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President. Meeting is adjourned at 4:45.